No.
Interesting word.
No spoilers, please.
You got it, Gabby.
Hey. So, um, we'll start. The time is now 5:33 PM and I am calling to order the South End Landmark District Commission, June 3rd, 2025, public hearing. Commissioners present are Commissioner Catherine Hunt, Christopher DeBoer, Peter Sanborn, and myself, John Amedeo. Is there, did I miss anybody, Rachel?
John Freeman just entered. I'm making him co-host right now.
Okay, and Commissioner John Freeman is just joining us. Today, the commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with Commonwealth Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, extending the suspension of these provisions until June 30th, 2027. We are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the South End Landmark District Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. This hearing is being recorded. All further conversations between commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has adjourned. Are there any media or elected officials currently present? If so, please raise your hand using the Zoom meeting platform and state your name, title, and affiliation. Do we have anybody raising their hand? I don't see any, but I don't know if there are.
No, I'm not seeing any.
Okay. And members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions. I'm sorry, I lost my place. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. We will repeat these instructions throughout the hearing. So tonight's agenda begins with design review, followed by administrative review, then we have one advisory review, ratification of the meeting minutes, and then staff updates, followed by adjournment. We'll begin with design review. The first item is 67 Appleton Street. The proposed work is to replace an existing window with a new sliding window on the Appleton Street elevation. If the applicant is here, please identify yourself with your full name and you can begin presenting.
Hi, this is Madeline Brayson. Should I share my screen? Is that how this works? Sorry, this is my first time actually attending the hearing, so.
Hey, Madeline, this is Rachel. So I'm running the slides. I have the presentation that you submitted. If you have a slightly updated presentation, you're welcome to share your screen. But if not, you can just say next and I'll scroll through your slides.
This will work. Okay, so you can, next. Next again, we'll move quickly here, but. So, the project overview is that the work will take place at 67 Appleton Street, which is the corner of Appleton in Clarendon. The permit applicant is myself. I, and the new founder and owner of Madeline's Candy Shop, which is located directly next door to where the window work will be done at 47 Clarendon Street. And the estimated cost for this project is around $5,130 and the proposed manufacturer and installer would be Boston Glass and Boarding Services. Next. Okay, so this slide is really wordy. I was going to put in an updated one, but my vision here is that first and foremost, I will still be a candy shop primarily. However, we've received some feedback from the community that they would love to have soft-serve ice cream, myself included. So I'm hoping to have an easy streamlined walk-up window with simple, a simple structure here with three flavors of ice cream, three toppings with the option to collect your own toppings in the candy store and kind of do an upside-down sundae just so that we can keep things moving along the street and there won't be a mixture of ice cream in the candy store and people coming into 67 Appleton. So it will just be a walk-up window, no patrons inside Appleton Street. And the hours of operation will be the same. And so here's a little, you can, you're good. You can go to the next one. Here is a visual of what the corner looks like. So we currently have a lease for the entire corner here. You can see the candy store, then we have our candy storage room and the proposed window would be right on Clarendon Street. You can go next. The design overview, the, uh, this is the spec that Boston Glass and Boarding provided with the accurate measurements. And the idea is, is that we'll be doing minimal design updates per se and just do a sliding window on the bottom half. Can go next. So this is a mock-up of what it would look like. In my opinion, I think that this would be really great for the neighborhood because we'd be able to finally open up the shades during the day and really improve the curb appeal of the corner of Appleton in Clarendon. The window design is super sleek, easy to manage, and there's no protrusions or obstructions in the sidewalk region. Next. Here are some pictures of the existing conditions. And so essentially, if you remember from the previous mock-up, the top panels of the window would stay the exact same, those two panels. It, what's really changing is the bottom portion. And even still, I really want to maintain the current look and just the only difference would be that there would be a sliding portion on the bottom half. You can go next. Here are the contracts with the window manufacturer installer. Next. And then here's my contact information. And that's it. Hopefully, I was quick enough, sorry.
You did great.
Madeline, that was excellent. It was. And so, um, just so you know how this works, I'm first going to ask commissioners if they have questions about your presentation. And then I'm going to ask commissioners to give their comments on your presentation. And then we will ask for, we will make a motion. And after we make the motion, we'll ask for public comment. And once we have public comment, we will vote on the motion. So that's the process. And so I'm going to go around to my fellow commissioners. Catherine, do you have any questions?
I certainly do, John. Thank you. Madeline, these are the two probably most critical questions. Number one, what brand of ice cream will you be serving?
You know, I, I reached out to Richardson's, but unfortunately, they don't do, um.
Soft-serve?
Soft-serve, so I'm on the market. If you have any suggestions, I would like to stay in the New England area.
Perfect.
Have anything, let me know.
Okay, the second critical question, what is your target date for opening?
My target date is June 16th.
Okay, fabulous. Thank you very much.
Okay, Chris, questions?
I don't.
Okay. John Freeman, do you have any questions? Is John with us? I don't see him on the screen.
I see him. I should be able to unmute.
Thank you. I couldn't, I couldn't unmute. I, the picture that we're seeing here, is this on the Clarendon or the Appleton side? Appleton Street side?
Clarendon.
Okay, so that's.
If you go back to slides, then you can see, so yeah.
So what is the single column that we're seeing in that image? The single post? Because I see a double. I just want to make sure I'm understanding. I'm not challenging anything.
Oh, yeah. So the one mock-up photo that I made was in AI, so it's definitely not accurate. I just needed, I just use it as a base structure, but it's not like the one column is structurally sound.
Okay, thank you. I thought it was something crazy for me. So the existing window is all wood?
Um, on the outside? I believe, I think there's some, I think, I would have to ask the window installer, he knows all the materials, but I believe it is all wood.
And are you going to take that out and then this window you're proposing is aluminum?
It is anodized.
Anodized?
Anodized, yes.
Yeah, okay. So you'll take that window out entirely, or you're going to adapt the existing window?
Remove the window entirely, just that, not the top two squares, but the rectangle below it, that big one, we would take that out.
Okay, so, oh, so this will fit inside of where the glazing is?
Yes.
So you're, the only thing you're removing is the glazing?
Which is the glass, yes.
Uh, yes, yes.
Thanks for interpreting, Chris. Okay, that's, that's, uh, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Let me just, for a little background, this was the Laskers Variety Store that I don't know when it was renovated and I know that they closed a number of years ago, but it was like an old, old-timey South End variety store.
I remember it, yeah. I don't know what, but I do.
So, Peter, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. It's sort of a follow-up to John Freeman's questions. So, um, Madeline, it appears that there is brick mold, wooden brick mold, the window trim that is up against the brick. We call that brick mold sometimes. So that, I guess, appears to be wood. And then you're taking the lower glazing out and you're inserting actually a new window underneath those top two transom pieces. And I'm just curious how that the top of that new installation will change the profile, the horizontal profile of that transom. Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, um, I'm looking at it right now. I don't think that it will change the upper transoms at all.
Are you saying, are they going to stay in plain?
Yeah, it will, it will stay the same. The only part of the window that's being worked on is below those two upper transoms.
I think what Peter's saying is that there, there is brick mold that goes from the very top of the transoms all the way down to the bottom. And, and he's wondering if you're leaving the upper two perhaps. I'm sorry, John, if I'm, or Peter, if I'm reframing, rephrasing your question, but I think the question is, can, uh, do you want, he wants to have continuous brick mold even on the new window, you know, to, to make it a whole.
Could we see the proposed image again?
I, I think that proposed image is misleading. It's not consistent with what you're talking about. And I think what you're talking about is better than the proposed image.
Okay. Do you want to go to the existing conditions too? So this portion, if you're seeing, this is just the one, even just the mock-up of what they showed. If you go to the design overview slide, that doesn't include the two upper transom windows. It's just the, the, like, main large rectangle of that being removed.
So can I try to say this also, like, help with Chris?
Yeah.
You're fitting, this is like what we would call a replacement window. It's fitting inside of the existing frame. So you're not removing any of the wood jam or sill or the, the horizontal molyne at the top underneath the transom windows. Those will stay exactly as they are now, is I think what you're saying.
Yes.
And that would make a lot of sense. That would be a very logical way to do this.
What I was trying to get at with my question was, aside from the brick mold, will the window frames match in, also in, the part I didn't ask was, match in vertical alignment? So what you, what we're not seeing here, I guess, is, well, I guess we are seeing the brick mold. But when you put in the new three sections of replacement window, will the frames of that glazing align perfectly with the transom? Or is it going to be a little thicker, meaning is the glazing going to be slightly less?
I would have to confirm with the uh, Boston Glass and Boarding manufacturer, but I'm, I'm fairly certain that it would match up with the transom and not like protrude or, or cause any issues to the exterior. I'm fairly certain that they're just trying to keep it simple and, and make it fit in with the existing space.
And if it's custom, they should be able to match it, so it would be that way.
Right.
Good, thank you.
I have one more question, if that's all right, if everybody else.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead, John.
Have you gotten your approvals from the Health Department to serve ice cream out of the street?
Yes, so we are conditionally approved by the Health Department. They just, I was actually just with them last week and they're asking that I change the occupancy from food establishment to like food establishment and takeout window. So that's already in the works and we already have the permits in with ISD and we are already conditionally approved by the Health Department. So based on what they said last week, it should be a very quick-moving process. And they're obviously fully aware of this whole window proposal as well.
Right.
Okay, great. So we've gone through questions. I'm now going to go to comments. Catherine, do you have any comments about ice cream flavors?
Oh, oh, yes. More generally, I have a comment on how wonderful this idea is, Madeline, because you are exactly right. It'll be a great, great thing for the neighborhood. And some of us remember, we tried to get the Rev to do this when they.
Exactly.
Remember that, John and John? Oh, yeah, Peter. And they failed. So we wish you every success. I can't wait to step up to that window, so thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
The hotels.
Yep, so, um, Chris, comments?
I, I also think that it looks well-done and it's going to add great, uh, street energy. It's going to be very similar to what Greystones is on Appleton and Dartmouth at the corner there, busy with the same type of window, but there's much bigger, but so I think, good job. I haven't stepped foot in there yet because I would walk out with armful of candy. And so, uh, good job. I, I like to see this in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Peter?
No comment. Thank you.
Okay. John, any comments?
Um, I think this is great. I do think we need a drawing, uh, more than this here that shows how it will fit in because what, the way they're proposing it, if we're understanding it correctly, or if I'm understanding it correctly, is going to maintain the whole existing window frame, so it's reversible. So if sometime down the road, she stops serving ice cream or some other tenant comes in or whatever, we won't have lost the window. And I, but I'd be perfectly willing to have those drawings go to staff.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. I can have that. I'll call them first thing tomorrow.
Okay, so, um, so I, I have a question for my fellow commissioners about, and that would be my comment. I agree with all of my fellow commissioners that this would be a great contribution to the neighborhood. And I am definitely an ice creamophile. So you would see me at that sliding, sliding glass doors. But my question to my fellow commissioners, is the proportion that we're seeing in this drawing correct? Because I have a, I'm looking at it and the upper rectangle looks top-heavy to me over the two sliding doors. And it might look better to me if the sliding doors were slightly taller. Like going to thirty, forty-two inches instead of thirty-six and reducing the height of the, the rectangle transom above it.
Well, I think that's a good comment, John. The photograph or the rendering is, is a little more, shall we say, palatable than.
Right, and the sliding windows look more vertical in the, in the rendering. But, but Madeline, you confess that, you know, that may not be exactly to scale, so. But, but the look of it seems to look better. And I think that's because the bottom windows are taller than they are in the, in the drafted drawing there. So that would be my suggestion. And it, you know, it's not a criticism because I love the idea. But I think the verticality of those two windows would be improved if they were slightly taller and I think better in keeping with the district.
That was not, not just a vanilla comment. It was really very good.
It'd probably be better for the workers too, on our space, so I, I totally agree.
Yeah.
And I, we looked at that also, sorry, John, the, the molyne down the middle of the sliders, is it, is it going to be the same width as the two transom windows? Does that matter?
It won't be. It'll be bigger.
Okay.
If this is aluminum storefront construction, and I think it probably is. But I don't think that makes a difference.
Yeah, I just.
Think John's comment is excellent.
Okay, so then it sounds like we need a drawing with that comment integrated into it, uh, sent back. A drawing of the whole elevation, John, were you saying? Or the whole window?
I think that would be just the whole window and the panels below because this image here is very misleading. I, I understand it was done just with whatever images from the internet. But we want to see how the window fits into the existing frame. I, I don't think it's difficult. I think the storefront vendor can probably knock it off very quickly.
Yeah. So that's great. So I think we're ready for a motion and then we can ask for public comment.
I, I will make the motion, John. I move that we accept this proposal with the caveat that we have a drawing submitted to staff showing the, the brick mold, the higher windows, and the whole, uh, mock-up of this.
I would say approve rather than accept.
Yes. Do you accept that amendment, Chris?
Yes.
Do you approve it?
Jimmy's on top. I approve that.
Okay. So, great. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Great, thank you. And we'll go to public comment now, Rachel. So members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. And do we have anybody raising their hand, Rachel?
Yeah, I don't see any hands raised and we did not receive any written public comment.
Sarah, there you are. I would have asked you. Thank you, Sarah. Hi. Okay, then we'll go to a vote. Peter?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Catherine?
Hi.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. So good luck, Madeline, and we'll see you soon. We'll form a line.
Yes, thank you, Madeline. Very exciting.
Okay.
Guys so much. I'll get you that information as soon as possible.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is 50 Harold Street, which is in the protection area. The work is to demolish an existing building in the protection area to build a new seven-story affordable multi-unit residential and commercial building. And if the applicant is here, please give us your full name and you can begin presenting. Rachel, I see a hand raised from Emily Bhutan.
I just get her a co-host. She should be able to unmute herself now.
Hi. I can unmute myself. Thanks for hearing about our project today. I'm going to give a quick introduction and then hand it off to some other members of the project team. Rachel, do you have the slide deck that you can put up? Perfect. Yeah, we can just stick here for a second while I do intros. So my name is Emily Bhutan. I'm a senior director at Beacon Communities, who is one of the developers for the proposed project at 50 Harold. Our development partner is the Chinese Consolidated Benevolent Association, who is a local nonprofit based in Chinatown, not too far from the project site. Beacon is an owner, manager, and developer of multifamily housing. And our specialty area of expertise is affordable housing. We're headquartered in Boston, right by City Hall. We have about 20,000 units in our portfolio and almost 2,000 of them are within the city itself. So we have a lot of experience in the area. So I'll walk you briefly through the program and then I'll turn it over to Epsilon and Stantac for additional details. But broadly speaking, this site currently houses C-Mart. I'm sure you're all familiar with C-Mart. And the program will involve the demolition of the existing structure and the construction of a single building on-site, which will consist of 117 apartments, all of which are affordable, and commercial space on the ground floor and in the basement level. And we haven't identified a specific tenant yet, but we have throughout our various financing and permitting processes committed that it'll be a similar, community-oriented Asian grocery store that will come back into the building once it's complete. The project was originally zoned as part of a planned development area back in 2018, along with a few other adjacent parcels, like the condos at 100 Shamet being one of them. And we want to note at the beginning of the presentation that the building as currently designed and proposed is significantly smaller in scale and size than what is actually allowed under the zoning approvals. So the existing zoning allows for a building that has 11 stories at one point and for, up to 14 stories at another with over 300 apartments. And what we're doing is way smaller, so the building will be a flat seven-story structure, only 117 units, as I said, as opposed to over 300. So we just wanted to highlight that before we start. And with that, I will hand it over to Epsilon to take the other slide.
Hi, I'm Brian McLaughlin with Epsilon, the historic preservation consultant, along with my colleague Doug Keller, who's, Keller, who's also on the call as well. Uh, so I'm just going to go quickly through the existing conditions of the site. So Rachel, go next slide. Uh, so the current, as she, as Emily mentioned, the current site includes the one-story commercial building built in 1966, along with 1993 two-story addition. There's very minimal architectural characteristics of the building and would not result in a great loss of resources that are contributing to the district. Is not listed in the state or National Register of Historic Places, is not determined eligible for listing in the National Register, is also not included in the MHT's inventory. Next. The existing building is not in, is not in, is in deteriorated condition and an additional deferred maintenance of the building result in continued deterioration. It has limited potential for alternative uses beyond, that are, would not, that would alter, that would not alter the building beyond its existing condition. And any S R alterations would completely alter the existing massing and material design of the building. For that reason, it's not a great candidate for reuse since it, for its intended project. You know, next. Uh, as, as the architect will continue to discuss after this, the proposed building will have minimum above-ground height of 97 feet, 177, 117 formal housing units. Uh, the project will transform a parcel that's located near public transportation, near the Silver Line and the Orange Line. And it's also landscape improvement will expand the existing pedestrian passageway that will connect the superblock between Shamet, Harold, Washington, and East Berkeley. And it's consistent with standards and criteria with the Harrison Albany Protection Area. And it's consistent with standards and criteria with the Harrison Albany Protection Area. And for those reasons, the project would be a positive contribution to the South End neighborhood. And with that, I'll pass it to Stantec unless Doug, you want to add anything else.
No, I think we're good. I'll pass it over to Ray from Stantec.
All right. Hi, I'm Ray Kettner, Stantec. So this shows the demoing of the existing grocery store, as as mentioned, and and I think what you're interested in what is what we're going to put there. So if you go to the next slide. From the ground plane, we are creating, as briefly mentioned, the through-block connection both east-west and north-south, connecting our kind of back doors connecting to the existing courtyard of 100 Shamet. But if we start at this will walk you through the site plan. If you start at the corner of Washington and Harold, which is in the lower right-hand corner, that is where our residential entrance is. It's also where the Silver Line and number nine bus stop are on that corner. As you keep moving along Washington, about halfway down the block is the is the entrance to the grocery store. And then as you get to the end of our building, we have created, we've we're reducing the two existing curb cuts and combining them into a single curb cut that allows for our loading and then parking. And then there's also a five-foot-wide pedestrian sidewalk that helps create, maintain that cross-block connection. Where we have an 18-foot setback from the B C E C project, and then additional setbacks throughout there were were established in the PDA. And then we have a 12-foot-wide pedestrian zone along Washington with a 10-foot-wide planting zone at the curb so to that there isn't to mitigate any uses as drop-off. If you go to the next slide, building height, we're at 97, as Emily mentioned, we're at 97 foot six is the top of our penthouse. It's a we're a two-over, we're a two-over, five-over-two stick-on podium construction. Where you can see on in the elevation here is where's brick and mixture of brick and metal panel to articulate the facade. Next slide. So you then may be wondering, where's the grocery store? The grocery store is actually in is our is a basement grocery retail space so that they that we can get to give as much space back as we are taking from the existing store. Next slide. And this additional section showing similar information. Next slide. And as we mentioned, it's a little hard to read, but the the existing topography, we're connecting through the we are the existing grades around the site so that we're maintaining pedestrian access. And then also we're reducing what's currently now is the back of this grocery store is affronting that the courtyard for 100 Shamet. We're actually trying to we're connecting that so that becomes a much larger shared public space. Next slide. I think these are views of showing existing and future conditions. So this is the corner of Washington and Harold. You can see 100 Shamet in the background. If you go to the next view. And this is on the bridge entering, coming across Mass Pike. Next slide. And this is as you continue down Washington, the the large gray box after our project is the future Drucker Building, 1033 1055 Washington. Next slide. And then this is as you get to the next intersection, looking back, the future buildings that are currently proposed appear our building, unfortunately. Next slide. And the same thing from a backside of the block. And then next slide. And then as you're coming down Harold, we are basically right behind 100 Shamet. I think that's all my slides, I would say. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, great. So I guess I will begin with questions from fellow commissioners. Peter, oh, before I begin with that, I just want to mention that Commissioner Felicia Jox Jox has joined us. So but I'll begin with Peter. Any questions?
My question is, there parking in the development for the store? And if so, where's the access to it?
Yes, so there's we're providing 19 spaces for parking that and the access, if you go to the plan is along that loading alley to the the left end of the plan. Second, page six, I want to say. One more. So parking is covered parking indoors at at the first floor. So you enter the curb cut on the far left hand of the page and go around, and then there's parking inside.
Where it says 50 Harold, that's the customer parking?
Yes, exactly.
So that's at the street level, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris, questions?
Yes, I do. My first one is, why did you downsize from 300 to 100? Just just curious, in this time of housing crisis?
Yeah, I can take that one. So the reality is much of what we build is funded through public resources, and things are just so expensive now that there just aren't the resources available to build that many units.
Okay. Very fair. Money talks.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Chris.
The other question I have is about the basement commercial space. How is it lit? To me, going shopping in a basement seems a little dark.
It'll be lit with lights, kind of obviously.
If there's any natural light.
We've been, yes, it would be great to have more natural light, but they actually the as a most urban grocery stores end up with a whole bunch of stuff on you give them a whole bunch of windows on the storefront, and then there's cover with displays and end up not having much natural light in it. I mean, my market basket, but by me has very little natural light in the back of the store. We are trying to make sure there's glass above those escalators as they go down. So we're trying to have it that be a a natural light radiating down. But
Window wells or something. It's at the base of the building. Okay, those are my two very simple questions. Thank you.
Yep. Just FYI, Chris, the Roach Brothers in Downtown Crossing is a basement grocery store. I've never noticed that there's no natural light there, but and I go into it frequently. So, John, any questions? John Freeman?
Sorry, I was muted again, and it didn't click off.
Okay.
I I meant to click it off. The so my question first is about the landscaping around the building. There's three existing trees that are fairly mature. And I see we're making it have getting a net gain. You you're proposing seven trees. Is that a serious, you know, is that a proposal or just something in the drawings? And could you talk a little bit about the streetscaping that you'll be doing around the building?
Those to the three lighter green trees are those three existing trees. The the goal is to maintain the three existing trees. And then, yes, the goal is to add four more. And then that is, it's a pretty generous landscape to the back to to help create a back backdrop for the existing courtyard.
And so what kinds of things are you providing here? Or, John, you jump in if you're not asking the question in the right way?
No, I think you're asking the right questions. It it looks mostly like shrub beds on the back side along the pedestrian walkway and courtyard. Is that right?
Is that what that indication is?
We actually have our landscape architect, Terry. I think he raised his hand if he can.
Oh, that would be great to hear from him.
Yeah, I'd love to hear from Terry. Hey, Terry.
Hey, everyone. Yeah, so we are maintaining those three Japanese alcovas along Washington Street. Everything that we're planting on the street will be Boston Streetscape approved. We are so part part of the story behind this this project is one, it's, you know, primarily Chinese development. So we're trying to bring something in that kind of Asian flair, whether it's brightly colored Japanese maples, turquoise, and things like that. We'll also have an understory of pollinators as well as kind of safe planting where we're not attracting rats, things like that, or people to sleep within these plant beds. And we're currently working actually along Washington to create more of a long, continuous bed of planting rather than the broken up existing plant beds that you're seeing right here. So fingers crossed that we can have a, you know, a continuous 70-foot-long plant bed along Washington Street.
What about materials, the hardscape?
Yeah, so the pedestrian zone will be cast place concrete. Within the site furnishing zone, we will have, well, what's shown here is brick, but like I said, we're trying to create more of a rain garden in the front for infiltration. There is a blue bike station, as well as visitor bike parking on Washington Street. And the back area where there's an existing courtyard, kind of top middle of the page, that existing is concrete unit pavers. We will have concrete paving meet up meet that, but then where it says residential courtyard, which is to the back right of our building, we'll have permeable paving brick in there. So yeah, it should be a really nice residential scale project in that area.
Great. So one of our purview here is landscaping, massing, and views from the district. It doesn't look to me like this building will be visible from the district, but could you comment? Have you looked at that, whether it might be?
In future condition of the approved massing of the adjacent buildings, it it will not be visible from the district.
Okay. Thanks for saying that. I think those are my questions, John.
Okay, great. All great questions, John. Catherine, any questions?
Yes. First of all, I want to support you, John, on what you said about Roach Brothers. I go there all the time downtown. It's a great store. There's no problem with light, so I think this will be the same. But my question is, how are you going to improve the situation, which is currently chaotic with parking the way that store is now? You have the bus stop, buses are going through. It's chaotic for pedestrians, of which I am one, and for vehicles going in and out of there. So do you anticipate that your plan for underground parking is going to improve that conflict which goes on all the time? It's really a tough situation there. I'm sure you're aware of it.
We are aware of it. And one of the so it is, it's not low-grade parking. It's actually it's at grade by the inside. The we would love to provide more parking, the every grocer would love to provide more parking, but this is what we can provide. And we do think it's amenity. It is going to be managed. We're going to have the goal is to have a the light system where you actually can see how many parking spaces are available and in the in the before pulling in there so that someone's not pulling in as and just blocking blocking up the works. And then I I think the there will I don't know, Emily, if you want to speak to whether there'll be there's the loading dock has to be managed as well. So there's a fair amount of management of just onsite management of how that will actually happen.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. We have heard this a lot from other public meetings and from people in the community. So I totally understand that we don't certainly don't want to make the situation worse. We want to make it better. And so we've spent a lot of time thinking about it. We haven't, like I said, identified a tenant yet for the space, but we're actively working to do that, and we will instill as strict requirements as we can as the operator of the store into their lease about parking management and keeping traffic moving. So we're we're thinking about this a lot, and we want it to be a better situation than what's there now.
Yeah, yeah, that's great to hear. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I don't care why you're lowering the building or making it smaller. I'm just glad that you are. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. And Felicia, any questions?
I just want to be sure that I heard correctly. I think when Peter asked the question for parking, it was said that it was a street parking. Then I did I hear that this was a bit below grade? 19 spaces?
It's at the it's at the ground floor, inside at the ground floor.
So you're you're going in where the you're going in where you're entering where the little blue triangle is?
No, you're entering just after that blue triangle. You drive past the blue triangle and then take a right into the
Parking access?
Yep.
Yeah. And where it says 50 Harold, that's all at grade at the street level.
And is it sort of like first come, first served?
Yes, it'll be ticketed and parking have parking access control on it.
How will they know? How will somebody know that it's full?
That's why we're going to do a active signage on the outside that tells it has notification of how many sites are available or whether they're full or not, so that you're not making the turn to just go check and and have to poke your head and then turn around. So the goal is that you're is you've active notification outside.
And it's limited to this is for the store?
For the store. Correct.
So I guess it's sort of like a little validate. You get the ticket. You could shop for up to two hours, and you have to leave or something like that. Okay. I think that was my only question at the at this time. You know, I do appreciate the attention paid to the landscaping between 50 Harold and 100 Shamet. Is any of that there right now, or is that all proposed new? So is the light green existing?
Yeah, the light light green is existing.
The landscaping is existing, not just the courtyard.
Correct. Although although kind of dimmed down green is is existing. So it's pretty sparse as it is now. So this would be a tremendous improvement.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Great. And I don't have any questions because Terry answered all of my questions. So it's great. So I think we can go to Commissioner comments and again, I I appreciate all the inquiries about parking. That's not really our purview for our review in the protection area. So we're looking at height, massing, and landscape treatment. And that's and setbacks. And there there really isn't a setback. They're building out to the property line. So so I'll start asking for comments now. So, Peter, any comments?
Yeah, my comment. I'm going to, I guess, stretch the jurisdiction of massing here and that that is I would encourage you to look about, look at slightly widening the access to the parking, even if it means shrinking the building somewhat just by a couple of feet. The intersection across the street is really perilous. That's a narrow, narrow street. And with all the other things that are going on in that block, block and a half. I just think you need to very carefully look at the massing and see if there are ways to alleviate potential hazards. That's my comment. Thank you.
Okay. Chris, any comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. John, comments?
Yeah, I think this is a nice project. I think it meets all of our criteria for height, massing, views, and landscaping. As it goes forward, it would be nice to have a little more information about the landscaping. I don't know how that would work in terms of at least staff include staff in the review of that. And that's it.
Yeah. Catherine? Question, comments?
Well, I know parking isn't in our purview, but I couldn't pass up the opportunity to raise that issue. It's just so critical.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, Peter, what intersection are you speaking of?
Across the street. Across the street, the
Across?
The street between Washington and Harrison.
I think it's Mullins Way, maybe?
Yes, Mullins Way. That's up a little bit. Isn't it? Or is it right there?
No, it's shown in the bottom left corner of this.
Patrick Gray.
That little, oh, okay. Yep. Okay. Thank you. It looks like a good project. Thank you.
Okay. Felicia, comments?
No comments. Thank you.
Um, have I missed anybody? Feeling like I, if I haven't, I'll just comment and say, I agree. This looks like a great project. I am interested in seeing the development of the streetscape, if indeed it's going to include a rain garden that we're not really seeing much about here, other than the notion that one might appear. But if it does, I, I would hope an update of the landscape could be submitted to staff. And staff always has the prerogative to check in with a commissioner if they feel the need to. So that would be great. Otherwise, I say good luck because it looks like a great project. So the, I, I think we're ready for a motion and then we'll ask for public comment after that. Before voting. Do I hear a motion?
Catherine, you want to do it?
Well, I, I would move to accept or to rather to approve the application as submitted. I just don't know about these provisos about the landscaping if there's
Hi, sorry. This is Rachel. Sorry, Catherine.
Hey, Rachel, sure.
Guys have to vote whether or not you approve the demolition of
Oh, right.
Ah, yes.
And you can vote to approve or whatever you choose to do the new design. Sorry to interrupt.
I'll make a I'll, I'll quick, I'll make it based on the perception, I will say my opinion that the building, existing building is non-contributing and the huge benefit that will come to the public from the new building that we would approve the demolition of the existing building.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Should I ask for public comment first before we go to the next motion? Um, Rachel?
You can do both.
Okay, so let's take a, a motion now on the approval of the proposed work.
So I again moved to approve the application as submitted unless there are specific provisos about landscaping, which I'm not
Those provisos were only that they should submit an update to staff.
To staff. Okay. Accepted there.
Yeah, we can send a update rendering.
Great.
Okay, so we have a motion. It's been, uh, has it been seconded?
No.
Second.
No? Okay, so John's seconded.
We need to vote on the first one too, right?
Um, after public comment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, but after public comment.
Got it. Okay. Megan is her hand up.
John's gonna read the intro.
Sorry, their, their slide deck is very beautiful and too much for my computer. So it's going so slow.
We may have overwhelmed you.
Yes.
It was a good presentation. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Old CPU. Okay, we got there.
Great. And I'll just, I'll just remind the public, we have two motions. One is on the demolition of the existing building and the other is on the approval of the proposed work. Um, members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. And Sarah, please orchestrate public comment.
Yeah, so I see Megan Richard has her hand raised. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, thank you. Hi, everyone. Nice to see you. So Megan Richard, Senior Urban Designer for the project from the Planning Department, from the Urban Design Division of the Planning Department. I'm happy. So in regards to the motion and the landscape details on the site plan, the project still has to continue their post-board design review approval with the planning department. So I'm certainly happy to include Rachel in that process as we finalize things with the site plan.
That's great. Thanks, Megan. Good to see you.
Sure. Nice to see you too.
Yeah.
Right. Um, so terrific. Sarah, do we have any other hands raised?
I do not.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I don't see any hands raised and I don't believe we received any written public comment.
Hey, great. So we'll go to a vote and we'll vote first on the motion to demolish the existing building. So these will be two votes. John?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, everyone to interrupt again, but we have six now. So unfortunately Catherine cannot vote. Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Only five can vote. My apologies.
No, so I got, thank you. Thanks, Rachel.
So I got, John, did I get Chris?
Yes.
Okay. Peter?
Aye.
And Felicia?
Aye.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. Thank you. Same for the next vote, Rachel? Same people voting. Okay. So now we're voting on the second motion to approve the proposed project. So Peter?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Uh, John?
Aye.
Uh, Felicia?
Aye.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. Right. Thank you very much. And we look forward to your project. Good luck, Emily and company.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
By Terry. So we will now go to administrative review. Do I need to read that text, Rachel? I can't recall.
You do not.
Okay. So it's a long list of administrative review and thank you staff for managing that long list.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Yeah. So motion?
Can I move to accept administrative review?
I second that.
Okay. Um, and we don't take public comment, so we'll go right to a vote. Cath, um, Felicia?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. And the next item, which is advisory, I need to recuse myself for. So can somebody take over as chair for me? Do we have an appointed person who does that?
No, anyone can volunteer.
I nominate Catherine.
Thank you. Even though I can't vote, can I do this?
Yep.
Yeah, you sure can.
That's fine.
Great, great.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna disappear, but I may, I may come back.
Yeah, you should listen, Enja. Okay, we will now consider the advisory review for six eighty-five Tremont Street. The proposed work is a multi-story new construction building for the South End branch of the Boston Public Library. Existing building will be demolished and the new building will be located in the same footprint adjacent to Library Park. And we have seen this before us one other time, correct? Yep. Okay. So do we have an applicant here?
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Brett Benson and I'm a principal at UTIL and I'm here to represent the project tonight.
Terrific. Would you like to take over and present your proposal, Brett?
I would love to. And if we could go to the next slide. And so as I said, I'm a, we're the architects for the building. We've also been working with Arcatis as our landscape design architect. This is our second advisory hearing with you. And our goal tonight is really to get some additional feedback on the design and then come back for a vote ideally in July. And just to orient everybody, the existing library sits at the intersection of Tremont Street and West Newton. It's adjacent to Library Park. And our design process began with a feasibility study back at the beginning of twenty twenty four. And we really evaluated several options for the branch that were both renovation and new construction. The branch sits within a flood zone. It's been closed since twenty twenty two because of catastrophic flooding. The study concluded that new construction was really the only solution that would meet the library and the community's needs. So far, we've had six community meetings, most recently last week. And we've had a lot of great public input into the design. On this slide, there's a summary of what we heard at our last advisory meeting with you all in March. And we've organized it really into three categories here. Materiality, facade, composition and signage, which we'll get to at the end. And comments on the materiality were centered on primarily West Newton. Enlivening the West Newton facade where vision glazing isn't required. There were some questions. Could we provide art or murals for the building in those windows? We did explore that. Ultimately, it wasn't sustainable from the library's point of view, but we can get into that. Brick detailing should be a critical element of the design approach. We have a little more information on that for you all tonight. Facade composition, details should pick up more on the proportion of neighboring buildings, especially along West Newton. Explore dividing the large West Newton windows more in proportion with the neighbors. You're seeing a theme that there were a lot of comments around our West Newton facade. And then also you asked us to advance the design of the corner of the building where the park and the alley meet. And with a comment that it just doesn't turn the corners elegantly as the other corners of the building. And it also asked us to consider protecting the brick from sidewalk traffic. Signage, I think, will be a topic of more discussion tonight. I think there were some mixed opinions about how prevalent the signage should be at this location. The library does feel quite strongly that signage really is an integral part of their mission. It's something that provides consistency among all of the various branches. And it provides legibility for those in the neighborhood who are looking for the library as a community resource. Can we go to the next slide? So we just have a few context photos for you here. This slide shows Tremont Street and the alley parallel to Tremont. Next slide. Here's West Newton and Rutland Square, the two streets that intersect Tremont Street. And then on the next slide, we have photos of the existing building. And I just want to point out a few things about the existing building. First is that the entrance is oriented at the southwest corner of the building that's adjacent to the park and set back from Tremont Street. The second is that there's very little glazing that the library has at the ground floor. And it's really primarily oriented towards the park. And that connection between the library and the park is a really important one. It's one we've heard quite consistently from community members as being kind of the defining feature of the existing building and one we want to continue with the new design. And then third, the existing signage here, it's quite minimal. And we've heard consistently since the study began that people, many people really didn't realize that there is a library at this location. And so that'll be something we want to discuss with you a little bit more. Let's go to the next slide. So just looking at the site plan, the existing building footprint is outlined here in red. It's approximately sixty four hundred square feet. The existing entrance is located in the lower left, the southwest corner, adjacent to the park. New footprint is slightly larger at seventy seven hundred square feet. It has a modest expansion. It's about four and a half feet into the alley and nine feet towards the park. On the alley side, that four and a half feet takes up about half of the zone that had been previously reserved for library staff parking along that alley, along the wall of the library. Next slide. So the new design, we maintain the entrance adjacent to the park. But we also oriented more directly to the pedestrian flow along Tremont Street. Visually, we want the library to continue to have a very strong connection with the park. And because the site is in a flood zone, the ground floor is raised above grade in a ramp and an elevator bring people from the street level up to the upper floors, including that raised ground floor. The library construction will require some very modest adjustments to the park. So that includes moving the existing brick pier at the park's Tremont entrance, just a few feet south to maintain a generous width and opening into that park and then just slightly adjusting the park's paving where it meets the library. Uh, let's go to the next slide. So I'll go through our proposed exterior design on the next few slides. Thanks. And so we just, we developed this diagram to illustrate our approach to the exterior facade composition. Library Park is a unique, it's a defining feature of the site. We want the exterior of the building to reflect that strong connection with the park. But at the same time, the sides of the building facing the surrounding streets have the opportunity to be more reflective of the neighboring brick buildings. Next slide. So this is a view from Tremont Street, from across the street from the park. We're proposing a design that is defined by a very open, very glassy entry pavilion that faces the park, which is on the left side of this image. And on the right, you can see the brick facade that I'll review a little bit more on some of these later slides. Next one. So here's an enlarged view of the entrance, projecting canopy and signage, announce the front door. It also shelters an after-hours book drop. We're proposing a warm, light bronze toned metal trim and curtain wall framing to help accent this glassy entry pavilion. The rest of the building's clad in kind of a rich reddish brown emperor sized brick. So that's a brick that's one and five eight inches tall by sixteen inches long. It's laid with a standard three inch mortar joint. So a little bit of a twist on the standard red brick and then district. And the building also sits on a granite base whenever it meets the sidewalk or the surrounding gray, just to help protect that brick. Finally, we're also using a vertical ribbed metal panel in that same light bronze tone as a kind of third material. These vertical pleats, we think, are going to provide a nice sense of texture and shadow line on the facade. Let's go to the next slide. So we have two comparison slides to review in our presentation tonight. So this is the Tremont Street view that we showed you all in March. And on the next slide, we've made some slight refinements to this. We've refined the signage to help reinforce the entrance to the building and provide legibility from different directions as you're approaching it up and down Tremont Street, or if you're across the street. And we've also made some very minor dimensional updates to the building. But otherwise, the facade's largely unchanged from the last meeting. So some of the themes were, the building is divided into vertical bays. Each of those are kind of inflected in plan between the windows. We think that helps reference the neighboring both buildings and the vertical grain of the district as a whole. Most of the building is clad in brick with punched window openings that are articulated with that light bronze toned metal trim. The building includes a base, a middle and a top at a scale that we think is appropriate to the two-story expression along Tremont and West Newton. And then that raised first floor is reflected in the granite base and the sloped window sills. And then at the top, the parapet is articulated with several courses of projecting corbeling brick to create a nice shadow line at the top. And it has a very minimal light bronze toned metal cap. Let's go to the next slide.
Brett, I'm sorry, could you go back quickly just to the, to the first slide to show the, the comparison? Thank you.
Yes, yeah.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much. And feel free to stop me if you have any questions.
Perfect.
Um, here's just the Tremont Street elevation in a larger context. At just under thirty seven feet tall, we meet the district's height guidelines, but we want to be very careful not to overshadow the park. And let's go to the next slide. And then this is a view from the corner of Tremont and West Newton. The building keeps that vertical base spacing on all the street sides. From this corner, you can see the blade sign above the canopy that announces the library front door. And you can also see some of the brick detailing that we're providing at the window jams and those inflected brick bays to help better articulate that vertical grain of the building. We're taking some inspiration from some of the detailing of the more historic neighbors to introduce some shadow and texture in the brick wall. But we're trying to interpret them in a more contemporary construction technique. Let's go to the next slide. So this is the West Newton facade from March. This is the facade where we received most comments about the composition. So we can flip forward to the next one. So you're, all of your comments at the March review really led us to consider the West Newton and the Tremont facades as related but different. Previously, we had kind of marched that same Tremont Street window and bay configuration around the corner onto West Newton. Previously, we had kind of marched that same Tremont Street window and bay configuration around the corner onto West Newton. And you encouraged us to be more sensitive to the differences in scale and detailing of the two streets. And we've taken that to heart and really made some important adjustments to this facade. So on the left side here, we end the vertical inflected bays at the corner of the building. So that Tremont Street facade kind of wraps one bay around the corner. But then the facade flattens out. So we don't do any more inflections beyond that double area on the left. And the windows also change to a more vertical proportion to better reflect the proportion of the windows of our neighbors. We do keep, we continue that brick detailing around the windows and at the parapet to have some continuity. But again, we really wanted to change the scale and the proportion of the facade along this stretch. And if we go to the next slide, you can see that facade in the larger context along West Newton. So here, the building height, it's more aligned with the smaller scale of the bow fronts along the interior north, south streets of the district. We go to the next slide. This diagram shows the rhythm of the A B spacing of the bays on the library that kind of relates, but doesn't mimic the A BBA rhythm of the bow front neighbors. And then on the next slide, here is another diagram, just illustrating the scale of the windows along the West Newton library facade and the relation to the neighbors next door. Next slide. So back to rendering views. Now we're approaching the library from the north along West Newton. Overall, we're really trying to keep the library design quieter, try to keep it more in keeping with its residential neighbors. We do have one other sign at the corner of this building to announce it as a library and help draw people around the corner to the front door along Tremont Street. Next slide. So on the alley side, we really wanted to be more respectful of the neighbors across the alley. Limit the amount of glass on this side of the building to the areas where it's really just needed on the interior. You can kind of see with these arrows at the bottom of the diagram, the overlap of the neighboring buildings and their backyards. It's really just the far left corner of the building that is visible from West Newton, and then the rest is covered by existing buildings along the alley. We go to the next one. So here's the previous view from the alley where it meets Rutland Square with the park, library park off to the right. And then if we click to the next one, this is the revised view. And so one of the major changes that we've done is we've introduced a corner window at that alley side to try to get the facade system to turn more elegantly around that corner. And we've also revised some of the landscaping along that alley as well to more carefully interlock the building and the curbing along there. Let's go to the next one. This is the elevation view from the park side without trees. And then if we go to the next view, this is the view as you would normally see it with trees in the park. And we're working very hard to keep those trees. They're very important aspects of the character of the park. Overall, here, this build, the side of, the design of the building on this side is more glassy and more open. As I said at the beginning, we really want to have that connection between the park and the library so that they both feel a kind of extension of public space that's interior and public space that's exterior. So this last slide, I'll come to, oh, here's, sorry, excuse me, the overall elevation, the four sides of the building. And then let's go to the next one. And we wanted to talk about signage. Signage I know came up in several comments at the last advisory hearing. We've discussed it quite extensively with our client. And we have kept the signage. We've tried to keep it, make it more integral with the design of the building. But we do think that the signage is quite important for the legibility of the building. So that everybody in the neighborhood really recognizes this as a community resource and one that is a very civic building. So I'll leave it at that and I'll open it up to questions. Thanks for your attention tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Brett. Great presentation. I'm going to go to John Freeman first, and I encourage everyone, because we've seen this before, I think it's fine to combine questions and comments.
Thank you, Patrick.
Agreed.
Okay, Mr. Freeman?
I don't have a lot of questions. And my comments, I think you're, you know, like, I liked this project when we saw it before. And I think it's improved. It's amazing. I think you've listened so carefully to what we said. I think the West Newton Street elevation has improved so much. It really does make a connection to the neighborhood now. Moving your crenellated piece over to the left was a huge move. Hadn't even thought of that. And I think it's, you're getting alignments and finding alignments with the other buildings that, that really work. I think also, I think that was one of the comments or concerns I had last time. And the other concern I remember having was the turning of the corner on the park elevation at the back. And I think you've solved that. I think it, again, really, even though it's a different material, brings the whole building together. It feels like the building is, has not, doesn't have a backside as much as, you know, and has four corners. So I think it's great. I don't really have any, any negative comments at all. I think this is a great project. And I also don't have any problems with the signage. I think that this is a public building. I think it's a unique, well, there are lots of libraries, but that a library is a unique type of building. And the signage is not advertising signage. It's, it's identification and wayfinding. And the signs that the free to all, and you actually deleted a sign on the front entrance, I think, that I would just as soon see put back. I think it's really important to identify this building as the library from all the elevations.
I agree with you, John.
So I, I, that's, those are my feelings about it. And I think your landscape architect is playing games with us because the tree grade fences knows are not allowed by our regulations. And it made me laugh out loud. So.
On sidewalk?
Yeah. Where the, I assume that that's where trees will be and have been removed for the renderings.
Yes.
On the sidewalk.
Yep.
Yeah, I think our tree, our regulations, tree, the small fences like that there where the tree is do not exist in Victorian times. And I think our regulations, correct me somebody if I'm wrong, don't technically allow it. Usually we don't make a comment about it. But since I think we know who your landscape architect is.
It's gonna be taken care of.
We will, we'll forward the comment along.
Yeah. Also don't allow flat, perfect brick sidewalks like that either in this.
We were laughing about that, that the rendering makes it look perfectly flat, but that is not what it actually looks like.
Well, thank you, John. Do you want to roll into your comments, questions?
Did you say me, Chris?
You may.
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. Well.
I said, I said Chris.
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed the meeting in March. Out of the country. But that of the one very important, I live just down the block down the alley on Columbus. So if I squint really hard, I can look right into the library standing from my backyard. So I, I think it's beautiful that corner at West Newton and Tremont is dead right now. It's just brick. I think this is beautiful that you're going to take it around the corner like that. My, my only concern, and I'm just, these are just comments because people have been through so many meetings with the library and, and the neighborhood and all of that. And I've been abreast of all of that. So I'm not going to tell you to make any changes because I think it's great and everybody else has done that. Yeah, my only concern is I see that little teeny alley now where so many trucks and things go in and out of there. I think, you know, it'll actually be wider because you won't have cars parked there anymore. Okay, so I see all this, but the, the windows, the, you know, it's the same but different. You know, with the buildings in the neighborhood, because there's so many different iterations of the, the tall buildings, the shorter buildings, the narrow buildings, the five story, the six story. I think it's just beautiful. I love the signage. I was gonna make the comment that, you know, West Newton is one way up. And so you can't see unless you look in your rearview mirror, the sign on the corner of the alley. But as John Freeman said, let everybody know that it's here for us because right now it's a little bit quiet. So I think bring it out there, show it. And I, I think you, you and the neighborhoods have done a really great job.
Terrific. Thank you, Chris. Felicia?
Yeah, just sort of echoing fellow commissioners' comments. I think the, you know, the first iteration that we saw in March was really striking and handsome. And this is even more striking and handsome. I guess the question that I had, though, just from a rendering perspective, the, the signage, the, on the Tremont Street elevation, is the BPL, is that translucent on that elevation, but sort of solid and applied on the West Newton signage alley? I'm just trying to sort of see what your thoughts are. The BPL in the middle slide seems completely transparent, whether it's sort of a punched opening or something. What, what are your initial thoughts on, on, on materials for that?
So the, for the sign above the canopy, the one on Tremont Street, the kind of middle and left images, that is actually a perforated metal.
Okay.
That we've been exploring. So that, that will have the BPL. It's legible from both sides essentially.
Okay.
And then on the West Newton side, those are cut letters applied to the brick.
Metal? Are you thinking?
Yes.
Metal? Yes.
Yep.
Are they lit?
Not lit.
Set it for you, Felicia?
Yeah, if you were to add the signage on the fourth elevation, you know, I know that this is just a comment that just came up. Where might you apply it?
Signage on West Newton Street, I guess, would be the fourth elevation?
Yeah. Would that be towards the right where the alleys or?
So, yeah, the, on the, the image on the upper right, the BPL is visible as you're walking down West Newton, or if you're looking in your rearview mirror, if you're in a car. I think that is enough when you're coming from the north on West Newton. When you get to the corner at Tremont Street, the signage above the entry will be visible. And we just, we wanted to kind of, we wanted the signage to reinforce the wayfinding rather than mark and advertise the building, but help guide everybody to the entrance.
Yep, great. All set, Felicia?
All set.
Thank you. Peter?
I have a couple of questions before comments. The, the panning of the base of the windows at the street level above the granite, is that canted or is it vertical?
At the street level, it's canted.
Okay. My, I do have a question about the BPL sign at the Tremont entry. Does it read BPL on both sides? Or is one side a mirror view?
No, it'll be legible as BPL from both sides.
How do you achieve that? You, you said that was cut, meaning?
Uh, so we've looked at two options. Our frontrunner is, it's actually going to be composed of three layers of perforated metal with the, the, what's visible is the BPL being the innermost layer and the outer layer being cut out to read the letter form. So that you have an outer layer on both sides with the correct legibility of the letters.
Okay, I guess I'm still not understanding how. You, you have one, you have one cut of the BPL. I mean, I guess I'm asking, is one side gonna read as backwards BPL?
If you, if you look above the Boston Public Library canopy, you can almost see it in shadow, well, not shadow, but BPS says it would look. Maybe that's reflecting in the glass, but.
That's reflecting in the glass. So it will be legible from both sides. Uh, it's hard to explain in words, but I think since we'll come back for a vote, we can bring a diagram of how that is put together.
Yeah, that might be good.
That would be great. I think this is a great trick.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, that was the, that was sort of where, where my question was around transparency, but.
Maybe it's not that transparent because you can't see the building.
Right. Because otherwise you'd be able to see the other side. So you're saying the BPL is that metal slice?
Right.
Right. So, you know.
I trust that.
I think you understand my question. My question is if you, if you look at the front of an ambulance, the word ambulance is backwards. But if you look at it in your car mirror, it reads ambulance.
Right. So the answer is it will be, you will not read it backwards unless you're seeing the reflection in the glass, but and I will bring at our next uh, hearing for you for the vote, a drawing of how that actually happens because I'm unable to find the words to properly describe it.
Okay, thank you. My comments are, I think the building is really, really handsome. I think you've made wonderful improvements, subtle but wonderful improvements over the prior review. I will be very interested in having a very clear understanding of any rooftop, the visibility of any rooftop mechanicals. They're often, I think, an afterthought and they detract from very attractive buildings. I, I still remain a skeptic on the need for the BPL on the West Newton side, but I think I'm in a minority on that.
Well, I think you and I are in a minority of that, Peter. But are, are you all set then with your comments and questions?
So my comment on that BPL, and I know branding and all of that, but people go to the library once and they'll know where it is. So I, I think it's less of an issue here.
But they needed to find it the first time.
They'll find it. Could you explore doing that? West Newton Street BPL in brick? As a relief from the wall?
Yeah, we can, we can look at that. I think I probably am not going to convince you on the need for that sign. But I will say that having discussed this quite extensively with our client, the desire for it to remain legible is really paramount for them. And so we will study it in brick. My suspicion is it will blend so much as to be camouflaged into the wall and maybe satisfy those who don't want the sign at all, but not satisfy those who want the sign.
Probably true.
Yeah. But we'll do the study nevertheless.
Okay.
All set, Peter?
All set. Thank you.
All right. I have a couple of comments. Well, it is too bad. I mean, to me, acronyms just cheapen what a, a place actually is. It's, it's too bad. But whatever, you know, I, I don't think we're going to win that battle. But Brett, you've done such a beautiful job in addressing the whole issue of presence for the library. Certainly no one will have to wonder what this building is. The openness on Tremont Street and on the corner on West Newton, it's clearly a dynamic presence for this wonderful public institution. And I, I caught the little subtle declaration on the park side that says free for all. I love that. That's, that's really, really lovely and clearly states the purpose of the library. So, well done. And I think that's all of our comments and questions. Rachel, do we go to public comment now or?
Um, so the public comment for advisory is optional.
Is optional? Do we have any raised hands? Is there an indication that somebody wants to comment on this? I can't imagine it's anything other than full support. So. Okay, great. Well, thank you, Brett. We look forward to your application, which you think will happen in July.
That's the goal. Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate your comments tonight.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
June ninth is that July, for the July deadline, Brett. Let us know if you have any questions.
Coming up soon. Got it. Thank you.
Terrific. Wonderful job. Okay, now we move along to the ratification of the minutes from the May meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
We ratified the meeting minutes from our, uh, May sixth meeting.
And is there a second?
Second.
I'll take an oral vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are ratified. Thank you. And do we have any staff updates, Rachel?
Yep, uh, I have one staff update for you all. The first subcommittee meeting for the window committee, um, is going to be this Thursday. We put out a public notice. It is at two P M, I believe. My schedule says that correctly. Um, and Krista Board, John Freeman and Peter Sanborn will be there as well as myself and Joe. The goal kind of just be to get things started with the anticipation that we will have additional meetings and have public comment on the road as things progress.
Rachel, will there be anything set out in advance?
Yes, um, Joe is planning, a couple of months ago, I think in January, we shared some slides with you all about windows, um, with some suggested updates. And so I think Joe is gonna resend all of those to you guys before Thursday. But Peter, were you with us then? I don't remember if you.
Yes.
Were you there? Okay. Um, regardless, um, if you guys want them sooner, you can go ahead and shoot me an email tomorrow and I'll talk to Joe and send, we'll get that taken care of.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Will you adjourn? I have an announcement before.
Mister.
Yep, yep, I'm back. I, I have an announcing, announcement I want to make. The AIA Conference, the American Institute of Architects Conference is in Boston this year. And, um, this week, it starts tomorrow. And I am giving two tours of historic properties. One tomorrow and one on Friday. The one tomorrow is a National Park Service administered site. It's Dorchester Heights in South Boston.
Oh, that's cool. I live right by there, John.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
We've, we've been working on this for five years. We held our first meeting on the lawn of Dorchester Heights, um, wearing masks in a big circle, six, six feet apart from one another in, um, April or May of, um, twenty twenty. And, um, the project almost didn't get finished or built, but, um, it did. And, um, we had to reconstruct the entire, all the hardscape and softscape. And, um, the monument itself has been renovated, um, under a separate contract. And, um, they had to take the monument down halfway, laid out all of the stones on the lawn, numbered them so that they could be put back in place. And the contractor is very proud to admit that after putting all of the pieces back together and they were finished, there were none left over. So, um, they succeeded in, um, reconstructing it to look exactly as it had. Even better, it probably looks like it did on the day it was first built and opened. And I'd like to say the same for the landscape. So we're giving a tour of that project, um, tomorrow. And it's a very important Revolutionary War site. There was a fort there that Washington commanded. And the work of Washington and the people in that fort were responsible for the British leaving Dorchester Day. And that is, uh, how we get the name evacuation day in our calendar in Massachusetts, was the evacuation of the British, uh, caused by the fort that stood on this site. So, um, it's a very important, and next year is the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the country. And so this site, National Park Service is, um, planning, um, a great celebration of the anniversary of our independence, um, on this site. So, uh, I'm very proud of that. So tomorrow I'll be giving a tour of that site for the AIA. And then on Friday, I'm giving a tour of the Christian Science Plaza. Also, so, um, and I know, um, Gabby, you were, Gabby and Rachel, you're giving a tour as well, aren't you?
Rachel's giving a tour, but.
Rachel?
Yeah, so she, but a bunch of us are actually going to be presenting at a workshop on Saturday after the keynote address for, um, historic building, um, resiliency in Boston, essentially.
Excellent.
But Rachel's tour, amazing.
Well, it's been more quite channel.
Excellent.
One of my other districts, yeah. A little nervous. Could be a lot of people that I've never given that many people a tour to before, but yeah.
Okay, if I can, if I can join that one, I will, and I can, I can either heckle or provide support from the back.
Please don't heckle me.
Okay, I hope that all goes well. Are we, uh, ready to adjourn?
We are.
We can.
Good information, everybody. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
So all in favor, we have to take a vote.
Aye.
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 Okay. Any against, hearing none, the motion carries.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.